Ordered the City of Longview Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for January the 21st, 2014. Please stand for the indication. Mr. Morris.
I pray a prayer. My gracious Father and Father, we come to you with humble hearts today, thanking you for the many blessings of this country and this city that we live in. Lord, pray for guidance tonight and all decisions and for those that are represented here today. We give you all the praise and glory forever. Pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our nation. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Then we can sit down. Let's, okay, item four, approval of the December 17th, 2013, planning and zoning minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item five, we have a presentation item that Commissioner Murphy will lead for us this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I am a liaison to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have had two meetings, and our second meeting this month. And we'll start off with what, a video that will be being shown on several of the television stations to help explain and get this plan underway.
Success is really about planning and preparation. To forecast the kind of home Longview will be tomorrow, we've formed a new Comprehensive Plan Committee to find out what sort of place you want to call home over the next 15 to 20 years. Right now, the process is being completed by a committee comprised of your friends and neighbors in Longview. But we need your help to make the process work.
This word comprehensive is just a big old word that means to consider everything.
There are many ways you can participate in the comprehensive planning process. First, you might take a few moments to complete an online survey on the Longview Comprehensive Plan website at longviewtexas.gov/plan. You can also discuss ideas at longviewtexaslistens.com.
Wow, what a wonderful opportunity Longview has at this time with the comprehensive plan. People can get involved and be part of the plan, part of the complete project that is going to happen between 18 to 20 years from now.
It's been said that if we can write the vision and we can make it plain, we can accomplish it.
On Monday, February 10th, 2014, the city will host a Comprehensive Planning Community Forum from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Laterno University Belcher Center. The Comprehensive Plan will build upon previous successes of strategic plans in Longview.
We need input from you because we are a city of lots of diverse people with different ideas, and the more ideas and the more input that we can receive, the better we can do our jobs and create a Longview that works for everyone, regardless of where they live or what they do for a living or how long they've been here.
I was born in Longview, Texas, so I remember Longview 20 years ago. I remember Longview 40 years ago. And Longview is a very different place today than it was then.
Here are a few things to consider about how you see the future of Longview and the surrounding area. How satisfied are you with the quality of life in Longview? What other city do you think has great features you'd like to find here? Of the issues facing Longview, do you think the most important is sustainability, traffic, neighborhoods, employment, or something else? What do you like best about Longview and prefer to keep the same or to see even more of? With your help, we can create a vision of what our whole community wants for our future to be in Longview. So please, be involved.
Come to the meeting. Call on the phone. Go online. Give us your input. Give us your ideas. Help us determine this vision of what Longview will be 20 years from now.
Why not now? Every year that we wait, every month that we wait to get this done is an opportunity that we've wasted to make our city what we know it can be and what we want it to be in the future.
For more information, contact the city manager's office at (903) 237-1021, or visit longviewtexas.gov/plan.
Thank you. We, we want to just encourage everyone, as the video showed, to, to please get involved and to give their input. We need citizens, we need neighborhoods, we need business owners to, to call or to go online at longviewtexas.gov/plan. As of today, we've had approximately 1,000 people who filled out that survey. And that survey will help give us information as we're meeting and we're trying to draft out what the plan is going to look like. Where are we going to grow? How are we going to grow? Where are we going to develop? Where are we going to redevelop? All of those type of issues. But it's important that we get people to, to give us feedback. There'll be a meeting that'll be open to the public, February 10th, 2014, at Laterno University at the Belcher Center. That meeting starts at 5:30. We will have some light refreshments there. And you also, if you come to the meeting and share with us, you'll get a ticket to go to a concert that'll be conducted that night. So that's kind of where we are right now. We're in the information gathering phase, and we need more people to give us more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. All right. Item six, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or applicant would like the item removed from the consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Does any commissioner or member of the public wish to remove any item? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Will we approve the consent agenda? Second.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Item seven, regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application PV 14-01, The Hamptons at Longview, filed by Abbey Development LTD for a variance to the subdivision ordinance section 92-97, subsection B, which requires sewer and water service to 2.709 acres of proposed lot 5B, block 1 of the Hamptons at Longview subdivision located on the south side of Hawkins Parkway. I do have a speaker card for this. Mr. Farrell? Gene Farrell? And let's see, you're...
I'm standing in for, I'm standing in for Dusty Farrell, who is my son.
Okay.
His work's got him in North Texas today.
Okay. And your first name?
Gene.
Gene, fair. Okay. Tell us about your project.
Project is to divide the property on Pine Tree Road from ag to single-family for, build a new home there.
On Pine Tree Road?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Oh, I may have grabbed, that's all right. We can jump over there. Which item is that? I guess we've already started this one. We'll come back to that because we've, we've already done the, the intro to... Who here wishes to represent item PV 14-01, The Hamptons? Michael Shirley, tell us about...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and speak on their behalf. This is a variance to the subdivision ordinance. The, the applicant, Abbey Development, has proposed a plat to subdivide property, which is the next item. Part of the subdivision ordinance does require that through developing property or subdividing property, that each lot has to be provided with water and sewer service. The purpose for this lot subdivision is to create some access. I believe the Marvilly Baptist Church is looking at purchasing one of the tracts and then, I believe, one of the other tracts has some drainage and detention and retention and silt ponds on it. So it's not, it's not feasible for development, so they're requesting a variance to not have to install those services for a lot that's really not developable, but they are trying to plant it on.
Is that right?
It's one of the lots, yes. The other, the other lots would have, would have the service. Let me go back. But we will ask them to note on the plat, the purpose of that, and if that lot is ever developed, if it's ever converted to where it could be actually developed, that they would be responsible for providing those services and extending it so that there's, you know, everything's noted on the plat. There's, you know, nothing that's, would be passed on to an owner unknowingly. Staff does recommend approval of the variance.
Any commissioners having questions for Mr. Shirley?
The lot they want the variance on, is that where the silt pond is?
Yes.
Do we have a better picture other than that? Or...
It's, I think it's the middle lot.
Let me go. Yeah, I don't have a, a real of that. It's this lot right here.
So where, they're subdividing that into two? Where's it gonna?
It's actually three.
The lot you're talking about is the oblong lot, right?
Yes, this lot is the lot.
And they're dividing that into two pieces?
Yes.
And where's the division going to occur?
Right here. This lot right here is an existing, part of an existing lot. It's part of the plat because they're, this lot line right here went straight down, and they're curving it over. But, but yes, this was a, was the lot.
Here's a bigger plat.
And this is where the new lot line is going.
That was a standard on the lot.
Where's, where's the, where's the pond at?
It's on this lot.
So they're not going to be doing anything with that lot?
Mm-mm. It's not developable as is.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, the public hearing is now open for application PV 14-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support? Having none, who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Also having none. The application for PV 14-, the hearing, public hearing for application PV 14-01 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 14-01 filed by Abbey Development LTD to replat lot 6 of the Hamptons at Longview into three commercial lots located on the southwest corner of Hawkins Parkway and Tryon Road. Michael Shirley, you represent this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wood. As the previous item was to approve a plat variance to allow them to not have to provide services for this portion of the lot, as stated, this lot right here was the original platted lot, and they are requesting to subdivide that, replat that lot into two lots, and then also this lot that was part of a previous replat. It is part of the plat because they are amending this lot line between it. So it is three lots on the plat, but it's actually just one lot that's, that's being actually replatted. So with the variance approved and the services provided for this lot, it does comply with replats that were either used for residential purposes or zoned for residential purposes within the last five years. Does require a public hearing, and that's why it's on the agenda for public hearing. Staff does recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any commissioners have questions for staff?
What is the easement, it looks like, going down through there, through those lots? Is that an easement?
SWEPCO, I think.
SWEPCO?
Yeah, it is, and let me zoom in because I'm not...
I can't see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're asking me something I don't have my mind on.
It's a power line.
Power line easement. Okay, thank you.
Is it a power line?
Any, any other commissioners have questions for staff? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open for application RP 14-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support? Hearing none. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Also hearing none. The public hearing for application RP 14-01 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item C, on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 14-01 filed by Holt Five Enterprises LLC requesting a rezone from agricultural to single-family SF4 for approximately 1.027 acres of the William Robinson survey, abstract 177, located at 3723 Pine Tree Road. Who, who represents this request?
Lot.
There we go.
Sorry.
And you're Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Okay.
Gene Farrell.
Now, tell us about your project.
All right. The project is to divide the lot and rezonate from agricultural to single-family 4 with the purpose of building a new home on the additional lot.
And on, on the property, there's already a residence there, right?
Yes.
You're just going to subdivide it into...
One that was built, I'm not sure how many years ago. Over 20, I'm sure.
Okay. And any question, any commissioners have questions for Mr. Farrell?
This new line will be on the north side of that residence?
Yes, sir.
Is there water and sewer available there?
I think there is, just up the street.
Any other questions for Mr. Farrell? Having none, staff comments.
Mr. Wood, as the applicant stated, they are requesting to rezonate from agriculture to single-family 4. When areas are annexed into the city, they are designated as ag zoning, generally because those areas were areas that were undeveloped in, in the past, it probably contained agricultural uses. We rezonate them as, as needed based on either an existing use or in, in line with our future land use map, which is a component of our comprehensive plan. As you can see, this area is actually designated for medium-density residential, so the single-family 4 is definitely within the context of that. And as you can see, a lot of the area that is developed in, in that surrounding area is zoned, single-family 4. So it is consistent with nearby adjacent zoning and the comprehensive plan, future land use map. This is an aerial, I believe their plan would be to split the property down the middle. They would have to have shared driveway access with Pine Tree Road standards, and then they would, there would be a spot here for development of a, a new single-family home. I don't have the exact locations of the water and sewer and fire protection for this area, but through the development process, the, they would be responsible for providing or extending that as necessary to develop it.
Okay. Any commissioners have questions for staff? Having none. The, the public hearing is now open for application Z 14-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Also having none. The application, the, the public hearing is now closed for application Z 14-01. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, item D on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 14-01 filed by Premier Management to rezonate from general retail and single-family SF4 to planned development-heavy commercial C2 located at 2100 Northeast Monroe. I do have a speaker card for Mr. Zorn.
Okay, Scott Zorn, Premier Management, I'm from Longview, Texas. And we came in November before the commissioners with a C2 request, just a straight C2 zoning request, and had some opposition. And between Michael and everybody talking about it, we decided to come back with a planned development C2, which would basically allow me to exclude certain items that are distasteful for the community in a C2 zoning. So what we've done, we've gone back and we've noted the property, and we've put a designation with the, with the zoning request that specifically excludes a dance hall, package store, or a parking garage. So we're basically asking for a heavy commercial planned development is what we're asking for now on this property. If I, and I'll bring you, I'll give you the Cliff Notes on the property. It's, the southern part of the property is zoned, single-family 1, and the northern part is zoned, general retail. And I don't have a tenant yet. I've had some, some good tire kickers, and I've got a pretty good commitment from a tenant that is a distribution tenant that needs a C2 zoning because of the loading docks and the coming in and receiving freight and distribution of freight. So to make my deal work, I need the C2, but I'm willing to give up the package store and all the other things I previously mentioned. Property's been sitting vacant, if you recall, last time, nine years. This is a skating rink since it's had operation, and fallen into somewhat of disrepair, and we're going to spend quite a bit of money on it. Last time we brought the property, we had a, we had a sequential division by putting five different pieces with rear accesses going out onto Eden Drive. And now you see we've eliminated that, and we've gone back to the drawing board, rethought the plan, and, and felt like the project would work better as a single-tenant project. And really, the impediment to this whole property has been over so many square feet, which I believe is 13,000, you have to sprinkle the building. So you're talking about, you know, upwards of $100,000 to put a, to put a fire sprinkler in the building. So we've decided to go back and do that now, potentially have a one-tenant user here, not even asking for any rear access at this point. No doors going, no driveways going, just basically keep the fences there, keep the screening in place. There's a, a number of trees that hide the, the rear part of the building, and basically resurface the parking lot, redo the building, put a new roof on it, sprinkler it, redo the facade, redo the inside signage, lighting, the whole nine yards. So basically, it's the same song and second verse, but we've, we've altered it a little bit since the last time we came in November.
Okay. Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Zorn? I have another speaker card also. I, I guess we can do that right now. Mr. Robert Johnson, if you'll...
My name is Robert Johnson, 414 Waynes, the address. I'm the minister for the Longview Church of Christ, and we have several of our members here in support. We were concerned at the last meeting over this property with regards on unrestricted C2, and I visited with Mr. Shirley this past week. We went over the restrictions that have been placed on the use of the property, package store, bar, I think, dance hall, the heavy trucking commercial, those things. And, and we are in support of his developing the building and appreciate his willingness to work with us and to exclude the items that were of a concern for us. So we're just here to offer our support and say we, we approve of what he is doing and appreciate his willingness to work with us on it.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Staff comments.
Mr. Wood, as the applicant stated, this is a planned development for heavy commercial C2 that would exclude some of those uses that would be inconsistent with the surrounding residential schools, church, some of those culturally incompatible type uses that, that were brought up at the meeting, more specifically, the, you know, package store, dance hall, nightclub, commercial parking lot, garage. You know, it would allow those heavy commercial uses that, that he stated they would need, you know, for, you know, warehousing, you know, talking about the truck parking lot. I think they had mentioned at the last meeting that they didn't want to see a lot of 18-wheelers and things. It's not to say that you're not going to see some, because with, with any kind of retail or commercial use, you are going to have some shipping. There's probably going to be some overnight trucks, but you're not going to have like a typical, you know, 18-wheeler yard where you're going to have a significant number. You're, you know, like he stated, they will have a, a loading area or loading dock possibly. And if, you know, if there are significant changes to the building, you know, that would, you know, may have to come back through the, the plan review, site plan review process to this board, you know. So I don't want it to be stated there's not going to be any 18-wheelers or no, you know, trucks parked overnight, but the intent of that is that it's not a significant amount.
It wouldn't be long-term with the whole parking lot filled up with trucks.
Correct. You know, you, you know, like some of the other retail outlets, you know, they may have a truck or two. It's not the same truck long-term, but it's different trucks that are there constantly, so it's kind of long-term. But it's not that same impact that you would have with a true commercial parking lot where they're lined up every day and staged overnight long-term. So that being one of the differences. But as stated, they are going to maintain the solid landscape buffer along Eden. I believe there's some, there's some chain link fencing with some solid vegetation adjacent to this property owner, and then through, let me scroll back to the site plan. The existing parking area would remain unless the tenant didn't need that much parking, and, and the parking requirements are going to be based on our existing parking schedule and our zoning ordinance. This landscape calculation table, he will upgrade the landscaping to meet our minimum standards, and you don't see exact locations because that's to be determined at the time of planting to be flexible, but we do have the numbers and schedule, you know. And I think it, it was mentioned last time that some of this parking may go away or it may be resurfaced. A lot of that's going to depend on the finish-out needs of the tenant, but, but as he stated, he, he does intend to, to upgrade the building, upgrade the parking, upgrade the landscaping, hopefully sooner than later once we get a tenant in there. So it's definitely a, a boost to this location. It is consistent with the adjacent zoning and the future land use map, and staff does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any commissioners have questions for staff? Having none, the public hearing is now open for application PD 14-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support for this request? Having none. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request?
Mr. Chairman, I have no opposition whatsoever, but I would like to say that I do appreciate the church and the builder, developer working together to accomplish something that is good for the community, good for all of us, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any additional support for this request? Having none. The public, a public hearing is... The public hearing is now closed for application PD 14-01. Do I have a motion? Having a motion second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, item E. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 14-02 filed by Arun requesting to amend PD 13-09, PD for single-family attached, to allow for a five-foot corner setback for the proposed lots 5, 6, 15, and 16, Block 1 Timber Trail Townhomes located at the southwest corner of Hollybrook Drive and Tryon Road. Who present wishes to speak in, or who represents this request?
Good evening.
You have to tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Arun Srinivasan, address 814 Crepe Myrtle Lane, Longview, Texas.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could you tell us about your project?
I was here not too long ago to get requested a zone change on this one here from, I think it was SF2 to a PD on this. I planned to put some townhomes there previously, right there off the driveway for lots 5, 6, 15, and 16. We had 10-foot setbacks on the corners there from the edge of the driveway. But going through some plans and between the builder and I, we found a plan that we lacked, which is a little bigger than what we proposed in the earlier PD. Earlier, we had a 20, I think it was 27, 28-foot or 27-foot wide houses, but now we lacked a plan that was 29-feet wide, better-looking townhomes. And so we had to go back and revise our site plan and narrow down our setbacks to five-foot. And it's my opinion, just those wider houses have a better feel for it. And I'm just requesting a change in my PD to go down to a five-foot setback on those corners.
And on this, was the road always 20-foot wide off of Hollybrook, or is that different right here?
It was a 26-foot driveway. But well, a couple of different things that ended up making us kind of squeeze it down a little bit was, first thing was the bigger footprint of the townhomes itself. And second thing is we noticed that SWPCO's power line is a good five feet within the property. And in negotiating with SWPCO, they were not in agreement to relocate the power lines. And so we had to come back and squeeze the whole thing down, and that's what ended up happening.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking about from fire access standpoint. Michael's, is 20 feet wide enough from fire standpoint?
20 feet is the minimum allowed by the fire code?
I thought it was more than that, but...
On the curb, don't meet fire code?
That I'm not sure of. I'll have to...
I don't think they are.
These right here may be, and I'm not sure what those are.
28-foot radiuses on them.
Yeah.
I may be completely wrong, but hammerhead designs require 28-foot radiuses on them.
Yeah, I think he's right. Per the fire code, the appendix, I think it's 26 or 28 for the hammerhead, which is what this is. Basically, a big hammerhead where they pull in, pull here, and then they back up to get out because it doesn't require the turnarounds because it's not long enough. They won't be allowed to park on the street. It'll be fire-laned, no parking on both sides.
Well, that's all good and easy to say, but that don't happen. I know in instances it doesn't happen on a 20-foot road.
Usually, on that 20-foot main road, sir, there's not going to be positively, won't have any parking on it because that's the main drive in and out of the building. And there's no driveways facing that part of the driveway. There's no driveways facing that part of the street.
Now, explain that again.
There's no driveways from the houses directly facing that part of the 20-foot wide street. All the driveways coming out of...
Okay.
All the driveways coming out of the house are coming to the 26-foot wide street.
So how wide is, we can't see that on this plan, how wide is the main street?
20-foot wide.
How wide is the entrance?
Now, this portion is still 26?
Yes.
Yeah, just this portion right here is 20. The main section is still 26.
Would you have no parking on one side of the 26-foot street? No parking on one side of that?
It would be no parking on both sides.
So where is the parking? I hear what you're saying, there's no parking. Where is parking? When I come over there to visit, where do I park?
Per our zoning ordinance, each single-family unit is only required to have two parking spots. Each one of these units would have two parking, two off-street parking spots in front of them.
Do they have a garage or there's two park, only two per unit?
Two per unit for a single-family. Now, they, I believe it's their intention to have garages. And in some cases, we do count parking in the garage, only one of the spaces. If like a tandem parking space where, you know, if you just had a single wide drive and one was enclosed and one was behind it, we do allow for that. But they are showing that they're going to have two off-street parking spaces per unit outside of the garages.
Okay, so if there was one car in the garage or two in the garage, you could put two behind it. So you could have four. Conceive of be have four cars parked, okay.
Right, right. Those are the driveways leading up to the garage, sir.
Yes, these are the, these are the off-street parking spaces.
And the garage is underneath it or in front of it or?
The garage is...
Yeah, that would be right in the center. Now, there are two additional parking spaces, off-street parking spaces that are being provided here for overflow if needed.
How large is the garage?
20 by 22, those are two car garages.
So it's just kind of giant hammerhead with a narrow entrance. And then, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, suppose somebody, you know, one of the end houses down there decided to have a dinner party that night, you know, where do those people park? Out on the street is where they're going to park.
We've been, when I say we, I was discussing this with one of my friends this morning and because I'm out there, we're trying to look at what kind of works can be involved to get all the dirt moved and things like that this morning. So we were discussing that option. And there's a big chunk of land to this, kind of the southwest corner, if you will. If I come up with a three-to-one side slope on that, there'll probably be about a 30-foot pad that could be used for additional parking spaces. It'll be a little narrow concrete strip that leads off on the main driveway coming in, and we could have additional parking over here. And I'm not going to, we're not going to pave it or any to have, it won't be like a parking lot per se, but definitely that'd be wide enough to accommodate additional parking.
And that's on the west end of the project?
Yes, sir. It's on the west end past, I think it's locked.
What if they're having a dinner party down on the east end? Where do you want to be?
And so you say you're not planning on paving it?
It would be a paved parking lot per se.
So in other words, it's not going to be any parking available beyond what you've already told us?
That's correct.
Each unit will have the ability to park four cars, am I correct? Four cars.
Best thing that I would suggest on that, and I don't know that we can require it, I know that some subdivisions did restrict the use of the garages for storage. I know mine, the one that I live in, says that you still have to be able to at least put one car in the garage for that reason so that you don't, because a lot of people use it, you know, for storage or game rooms or whatever. But that might be a suggestion for them also. Unfortunately, we don't, even in any other neighborhood, we don't require that they have more than two. Just so happens that on public streets, the street is wide enough, and we do restrict parking in the streets.
Is there any street parking on Hollybrook or what's the cross-street that's, I'll try a minute.
No, there'd be no on-street parking.
Well, the city can come in and give you some parking up there. I'm just joking.
What, and I guess, I guess maybe I should ask this question last time. You're not able to have access to Tryon Road because, was it too close to the intersection or?
Not just that, it's because the grades are not helpful enough to have a two-point access there.
Say that again.
The grades are not kind of conducive to have two-point access there. It's because we're going to have, that's the reason I'm going to have a step four-foot rotating wall there on the east side. It's a 6% slope already.
You say you're going to have a retaining wall there, step down?
Yes, sir, terrace rotating wall.
That's what I thought because I drove in there this morning, I drove into it today to see, because you can have access, I mean, we're wearing this right now.
As we speak right now, there's access, that's correct.
And the previous... So you're just amending your previous planned development?
Michael, can you show us with your mouth where we're going from 10 to five feet?
Yes.
We can't read any of these.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. On these corner lots right here, right here would be a five-foot as opposed to a 10 on this lot, this lot, right here, and right here. And these aren't true corner lots right here because the paving doesn't come all the way. There are two additional parking spaces here that we did ask for. I know it's not much, but it's better than nothing. So they're not true corner lots, but they still are kind of into-building lots. And the original plan did show 10. We did go back and look at some previous planned developments that were very similar to this, and that has been used in the past with a five-foot on these kind of more dense developments like this. On a more traditional single-family, we like to see at least a 10-foot on a corner side. But on the planned developments, we have seen a five-foot that's been approved in the past.
I'm just looking at the, you know, the access issues out there. I guess maybe, should have looked at it a little closer last time, I guess. But, you know, it's got a narrow entrance. I mean, so you can, a window could be right there, and traffic's just going to be going by five feet from your window all the time. Is that right?
Our floor plans don't call for windows on the side because like you can see, all those, but for the corner ones, all those houses are buttered up against each other. So we don't have any windows called for on the sides. We definitely have, it's going to be on the rear or on the front.
And I guess y'all have studied this pretty hard, just two access points in and out there just wasn't economically feasible?
No.
We've approved this before as it sits, right?
With some minor differences. We approved the generic layout with a single point of access. The previous layout that was approved did have 10 feet setback from the edge of pavement to the, to these buildings. And then this was also a 26-foot drive. So it was a little more room in here. But there were little smaller units, too. They're a little smaller lot size, little smaller unit. I think the original plan called for potentially kind of like a two-and-a-half-story kind of, you know, level underground. And I think that's since kind of gone away. I think it's just going to be kind of just more of a traditional two-story. You know, once they really started looking at the topography and looking at the amount of fill that they had to work with and everything, and looking at the floor plans, and they realized that, you know, that they need a little more room and, you know, get that wider unit. And in order to do that, kind of shifted everything this way and starts getting close down here with the amount of room that we have.
That's why I was going to ask. To accommodate the original street, we could have shifted the east, east or the west line further west, right?
Yeah, it just starts dropping off a lot farther here, starts getting closer, if I'm not mistaken. Just gets a little more, a little more difficult. He can kind of talk to probably those, the issues that they run into if they, you know, in order to make that happen.
As it stands right now, I think from that corner of that building to that property line, we have 15 feet.
Which, if you move the west boundary line, you could have your previously approved street width, was it 26 feet?
Yeah, if we, I think if we, if we just add the street width back here, that gets us like within nine feet of this property line. So it just starts, start running out of room real quick when we try to get a larger unit in there. It's tight.
Yes, to the west end.
Trip up in there?
Yes, sir.
Why couldn't you eliminate one of the units on the top there and add it to the bottom? Because you said you had 30 feet on the bottom there for parking. You still have the same number of units, and you could go back and widen the street a little bit. I'm still concerned about the radius on the fire deal. I'm not worried about the parking. I'm thinking you're skirting it really close for a big truck to come through there, you know. And if there's anything in the way, a car or anybody, you know, it's not going to make it. And the guy on the end down there, he'll just burn down before they can get to him. I'm not real sure about that radius. I've investigated that before, and I don't, I thought it was around 30, 35 feet, but, you know, I may be wrong, but...
And if there...
That would eliminate, if you eliminated one of the units up on the top there and put it down on the bottom, you could scoot that back out, you'd gain the width of that property there. You still have the same number of 20 units there. Right? You'd have to make the street a little bit longer, but...
Yeah, that's what's going to end up, yeah. I can try to do that. The only downside, hopefully it's not a downside, but if I add another unit here and the driveway gets extended, we could go only up to 150 feet, and then we'll have to come back with another hammerhead on this far end. So...
The street's over how long?
If the street is over 150 feet, we'll have to come back...
Each way?
Just one way.
Okay.
I'd have to come back and provide for another hammerhead on this side. As it stands right now, with five units, it's a little shy, it's five feet shy of 150 feet because those are 29-foot wide units. It's 145 feet as we speak right now. Adding one other unit to the additional on the west side is going to increase my driveway length to 150-plus feet. And then according to code requirements, I would have to come back and provide another hammerhead on the west side. And then according to code requirements, I would have to come back and provide another hammerhead on the, on the west side.
Is that the whole length of the street, Michael, or is it? The access to the end of the street, 150 feet?
If you go over 150 feet, you have to do a turnaround at the end of it.
At the end of it.
And because this is kind of a modified T hammerhead, because it's in the middle, then it's really from this point. To this point. And if our marshal has looked at this.
Well, that's not 150 feet then.
Right now it's not, but adding one more unit it would. Right now it's 145 feet, because those units are 29-foot wide.
Okay.
And we got five of them.
Yeah, if they added another unit down here, then they would have to provide a turnaround down here.
The, the streets, the streets, I'm sorry, the, the street size and the width were approved last time in the PDM, am I correct? Or have they been adjusted since?
This one has been adjusted. The original submittal, I believe this one and this one was 26, and he's asking to reduce this one to 20 and maintain this one at 26.
Which is still, according to you, in the fire code is appropriate?
The fire code does allow for 20-foot minimum streets. With no parking on either side. So, I mean.
Well, I, I doubt very seriously that other people would park in front of other people's driveways. And I don't even think there's any room to park a vehicle according to this between the driveways, am I correct? I don't know the scale here.
No, he blocks somebody's driveway.
But I might have you park in front of my driveway if you're visiting me.
Or in my driveway if my car's in the garage.
Well, I, I agree. You would hope people would not do that.
You know, one of.
They will, but.
That, the parking, that's, that's one of the downsides to the development, and hopefully that this type of development is appealing to someone that doesn't have more than one or two cars, and probably doesn't see a lot of guests, or is gonna have a big party like that. You know, we do have some developments around town that, that have 20-foot, 24-foot, 26-foot streets. Some of them, it has been an issue, some of them it hasn't. And some of them aren't fire lane striped, we've kind of transitioned into that, because fire lane striping and signage is kind of intrusive into a neighborhood, but some of those neighborhoods we've had issues with, and so the fire marshal is requiring that there be fire lane, no parking, red paint on both sides, so that everybody knows you can't park there, and if they do, and they get a call, then come out and write a ticket. Hopefully, the, the developer and, you know, the, how these are maintained, that, that will be passed down the line, that, that this is how this kind of development operates, that if you're gonna, you know, you're not gonna be able to have dinner parties. You know, and if you're gonna have a guest, hopefully you're gonna have, you know, I mean, it's just a different style of development. It's not your traditional single-family.
Michael, did I?
Something you see in California?
Excuse me.
On that 150 feet?
They could ask for one, I don't know that we would support that.
So you'd rather a truck not be able to get in there?
No, they'll be able to get in there, it'll meet the code. And what did you say the, the radius was?
28 foot radius.
28 foot, and I believe the fire code allows for 28-foot radiuses on it. I mean, it's, it's just right at what it would, you know, for a fire truck to get in there.
That, that particular hammerhead was, in my opinion, was designed for fire codes, so.
And, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the fire marshal, I was looking at the appendix to see the, the illustration in there, and it does show, show that, but certainly before this is constructed and it goes through the more formal pre-submission and plating process, this, keep in mind, this is just the zoning portion of it. They will have to meet all the codes there, just because y'all, you know, grant something, and the fire marshal has looked at this. So, you know, he, you know, everybody.
It does have a 20-foot radius here, though.
Does it show 20 foot?
Yes.
Right here?
28, no, sir, that's 28, because the one on top is.
Mine shows 20.
The one on top is a 26-foot radius, so that's a 28-foot radius right there.
What are these?
28.
Okay.
That's not what's on mine, mine says 20. On this side?
It, it, I apologize if it says 20, but I know for a fact, fire code requires it to be 28 feet, maybe it's a, I'm gonna say it was designed to be 28.
So, so whenever that's scaled to a 28-foot radius, that's gonna even clip even closer to the buildings as they sit right now. You know, maybe it's just mislabeled and the, and the scale is correct, I don't know. Okay. But there, there is a homeowner's association.
Yes, sir.
With this project.
Yes, sir.
I don't mind saying, I, I didn't recall that this one didn't have access to Tryon Road, that's disappointing. Because I think, I think you are gonna have parking and access problems in and out of there. I think you're gonna have a hard time getting a moving truck in here to move these people in.
And you can't park on the street while they're doing it.
It's a fire lane.
You have to park out there, and you're gonna have to wheel all the way around.
Shuttle over from one of the schools.
If there's a moving van, then there's a fire, whoo, not a problem.
There's one way in and out.
Exactly.
Can, well, I, I've used this term before, but it, it doesn't always go. I, I'd like to revisit this more. I mean, we've got questions, we're wondering if the scale is right, if the radius is right, because if you change the radius, it's gonna clip closer to the edge of the building right there.
Sure.
I would like to see more investigation into the hammerhead, the 150-foot measurement. Where it seemed like the logical thing, where you was discussing earlier, to move, relocate one unit, investigate that and see if you possibly could, put one down there on the bottom end. And Shirley, Mr. Shirley, you had made a statement saying we may not be supportive of that. So, seem like some investigating in that and see. That's all.
So, can we table this for this month, or we just have to deny it and it comes back?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't table it, because that kind of, yeah, that just kind of puts it out in no man's land. I would do one of two things, I would, you know, either give some direction as far as what to come back with, you know, if you, if you're not comfortable, you know, what items you're not comfortable, and from what I'm hearing, you're not comfortable, and, and I'm not speaking for all of y'all, but I'm just throwing this out there so I can get some direction. It appears that the, the two main changes, the 20-foot and the 5-foot, you're not comfortable with, so to me, you, you make a recommendation for denial, because you would rather see what was approved than this, or you, you recommend that he go back, maybe postpone a, a vote, and, and ask him to go back and revise it, investigate some of those options that we've talked about, verify some of the dimensions and bring it back. If you're in fact comfortable with the 5-foot or the 20-footer, if you're, if you're, maybe if you're not comfortable with one over the other, but with some, with some direction, or if you're just not comfortable with neither one of those, let's get a, a recommendation for, for denial.
Well, before, we had 26-foot street and 10-foot side setbacks, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, this, to me, this is just kind of the last straw that's got.
What if you eliminate one of the units on the top up there? Is that gonna kill your deal?
Not necessarily kill the deal, but definitely burn holes in the pocket.
Of it, I understand that, but look at what you've got invested in the rest of it to get that street back. It's a life safety issue with me, I'm not worried about the parking. I mean, we're running out of property in Longview that's viable to build on, and that's just gonna sit idle unless we do something with it. So, if you can't add to the bottom row of units, and the fire marshal won't make a concession for that, then my option would be eliminate one of the top ones, move everything back over, get that road wide enough to make sure that radius is wide enough, and then, you know, it's a life safety issue with me, I, I could care less about the parking. I mean, two places is two places, you, you don't have much more than that in a parking lot in a, you know, in a hotel or in an apartment complex, so, you know.
Extend it, if he moved that, that top unit to the bottom and extended the road over 150 feet, could he get a variance for the cul-de-sac?
We would not support it, there is an option, he could sprinkle the buildings, which is a life safety issue. You know, and that's typically, the fire code allows some concessions dealing with those distances, because when you get over 150 feet, it becomes unsafe to back up a fire truck that large that far.
You're at a, a road length right now of 145 feet?
I would, yeah, from that intersection, it would be 100.
And if you moved one of the units over, how much would that extend the road from one, what would be the total length of the, the road at that point with the hammerhead on the end?
175.
170, so it's pretty significant. You know, and, and remember that this was all driven by the width of the unit. Another option is to go back and look for another smaller, narrower unit that was like what was approved before.
Well, the, he has a space between those two buildings at the bottom, correct? If he eliminates that space, pushes those buildings all the way together, then moves one of the tops to the bottom, he should be close about to where he's at. I don't know what the space between the two buildings is for. If there's, if there's no access there, why not just push all the buildings together? Then that would give him room to move one of the buildings to the bottom and maybe give him the same deal, just a.
Basically put another unit right here?
Yeah, well, just, just take one from the top, push the, push, take one to the top, bring it to the bottom, and just push all those, you'll have 11 buildings next to each other at the bottom. I mean.
I'm gonna look at the option of either losing a lot, because trying to do that, the only reason we have a gap over there is for any kind of maintenance that people might want to do on their, on their backyard. And, and not to mention, that's a, a public easement to the, to the sewer line, so, and there's a manhole right there, so, from, just from a maintenance access standpoint is the reason why we have the separation. And I think it just, with those houses being kind of quartered off the way they are, I think they're a little more appealing than trying to stack 11 of them together.
You know, and an option may be to try to look at a narrower unit to get that, to get that space back to, to still maintain.
So what kind of firewall is he gonna have to have on, between his units?
It will be a true.
It'll be a three-wall separation?
Yeah, it'll be a three-wall, because these will be individually subdivided, individually deeded units, so they're, it's a townhouse, unlike a, like a duplex where it's just a shared wall.
So basically each unit out of the 29 feet, you're gonna lose 18 inches. Just on firewalls.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's gonna be tough. What, what's the? The elevation difference there on the east end between your proposed road and Tryon Road? What did you say, four and a half feet?
Seven feet separation, there are two.
Vertically?
Yes. There are two, three, one of them is a four-foot wall, the other one's a three-foot wall, they're stair-stepped.
I think we'd, I mean, definitely need to revisit the radiuses and the street width, given the, you know, once you're in there, you're in there. I think it's just too tight. So. We make a motion to deny it, and he brings it back after he's chewed on it some more?
We can make a motion to carry it over to the next meeting, can't we?
Yeah, you can make a motion for him to bring back, basically clarifying the radiuses, if that's one of your main issues. If you, I mean, if, if you just don't like the 20-foot street and that 5-foot, you know, you don't like the overall density of it, I don't know that.
I mean, as liberal as I am with development stuff, this is making me nervous.
And, and that's why, you know, even if you make, and, and a recommendation and a motion carries for denial, he can still opt to go to city council with it, it does require a supermajority vote at council. Definitely, you know, any, any comments that you guys have weigh heavily with council on issues like this, but that doesn't kill it. If you, if you vote basically for him to take it back and revise it and bring something back, it would be nice to have some sort of direction, and that's certainly, you know, I mean, he could say, no, I don't want to do that. I want to move forward with what I've submitted. You know, it's all based on, basically comment of what y'all are really looking for. If you're, if you're not happy with what he's submitted, which kind, what I'm hearing, you're not happy with it, I would, I would probably make a motion to deny. Hopefully, the applicant would withdraw his application and bring something back that would be more fitting, but he does have that option to move it forward to city council to, to get them to try to overturn your decision.
Michael Holcomb, did I hear you say? The fire marshal has looked at this and approved it?
He's looked at it, I mean, it, you know.
Did he approve it?
Yeah, the, the fire code does allow for a 20-foot fire lane, it, it would allow for all of this to be 20-foot with no parking on it. You know, because they're not over 150 feet. Just because it meets the fire code, though, doesn't mean that you have to approve it, because it's a planned development. They're asking for a lot of density, so.
A lot of me have a problem with 5-foot setbacks, but I do have a problem with 20-foot streets.
Yeah.
Because I'm dealing with that over another issue right now.
Sure.
I'd like to see a little wider street, Steve.
You know, and.
For the fire department, really.
You know, we, staff is recommending approval, but that is a concern that we had when we got it, that was, you know, to, to be fair, we, you know, we kind of took a step back and said, I don't know if we're okay with that. We did kind of do some research, and a lot of what we base our decisions on is the zoning ordinance. We do look at past history of other planned developments that are very similar to this, and we did go back and look at some research. And there, there are others that have had 5-foot setbacks, were they the same development, were they the same layout? No, so, you know, we're not gonna be the ones that are gonna, you know, we wanted to let it come to this point and get that public comment and get the commission comment to make the decision, we didn't want to be the ones that said, no, we're not gonna support that, don't move forward, you know, without having that, that comment.
I'm just having issues with, you know, we've, we've approved the plan development before, where the, you know, it's obviously a very dense development in there, but there's one way in and one way out of there, and. I don't either.
Yeah, we, you know, to be, to be fair, we did talk about the access quite a bit. You know, and at first, yeah, you know, it, it would've made sense to have two points of access, but then when we really looked at Tryon Road, we really didn't want access on a Tryon Road.
I think I remember that conversation now.
And, and we had the same concerns as far as, you know, fire access, trash, I mean, we even went and talked to the sanitation department, showed them the plan and said, what do you think, are you gonna be able to get a trash truck in there? And they're like, we will pick up trash. They didn't promise it'd be with a full-blown trash truck, but they said we can, we can make it happen.
At a minimum, I think we need to revisit this plan with, with at least the same width street that we had before and the setbacks, and go from there, which may negate what, what he's, this plan altogether.
Yeah.
But a 20-foot street and 5-foot setbacks, I'm, I'm just not good with that, given the limited access in and out of there. I, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, suppose, you know, who knows what'll happen, suppose, you know, a large truck blocks the one way in and out of there, going to the east, there's, I think you said, four or seven foot of elevation difference between their road and Tryon Road, so you're not going that way. And going to the west is a big hill right there. And going to the west is a big hill right there, so you're not going that way. There's one way in there and one way out, and, and making it more narrow is, I don't believe.
Man, I'd just like to say this, you know, if it's coming back or whatever, I got concerns about one way in and one way out. I don't remember it this way, I've slept a lot, so forgive me. But I'm also concerned because I just don't, I don't labor under fantasy that people aren't gonna park out there. I mean, this is Law View, Texas, and I live in an area right now where we got a lot of problems, because we got front garages and the people got four cars and they're parking on New York, and we having all kind of problems with that. And not provide some kind of parking, overflow parking, when people come to visit or have a party we talked about, to not provide that, this just doesn't work for me, so.
The, the baseline that, that he can go back to is what we previously approved, and, which is also a one-way-in, one-way-out 26-foot street. But that's, you know, that's the trade-offs that we're, sometimes we're willing to try to make to, you know, work with you guys to, you know, get your development to go. I mean, because we want it to go. But there, there are safety concerns from several of us.
I have a problem with the 20-foot street. I mean, people are gonna park on it one way or the other, unless the Fire Marshal comes in there and gives tickets on it, but I, I still am concerned about a truck being able to get in and out of there with that radius, I just, that's awful tight for one of the big fire trucks to come through there on. And like you say, if somebody's parked right there waiting to get on to the road there, they just can't make it, I mean.
I guess I'm more in, in favor of denying the request because he can go back to what was previously.
Approved, correct.
Approved.
But before we make a motion, though, we do need to open the public hearing.
Oh, yes, yes.
Let's not forget about that.
Any other discussion? Okay, the public hearing is now open for application PD-14-02. Who present wishes to speak in additional support? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. The public hearing for application PD-14-02 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we deny PD-14-02 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, a public hearing will be held to consider application PD-14-03 filed by Benchmark Design Group requesting to rezone PD-12-04, which, PD-gr, with, without site plan approval to PD-14-03, Plan Development General Retail, to, to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window on lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Skyway Acres A, and a 0.157 acre residue of abstract 258 PP range survey, Section 6, located on the southwest corner of East Loop 281 and Airline Road. Who present, which is Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, Robert Montgomery, represent Raising Cane's Restaurants. I'm at, her corporate office is at 6800 Bishop Road in Plano. And my civil engineer would normally be here, however, he has the flu and decided not to come and infect all of us. So, yeah, but I, I'm not sure if you all are familiar with this site, or I rode out there just a little bit ago, drove over here just a few, you know, a couple hours ago today, and, and walked through the site and looked at it, and it looks like there's quite a bit of development going on up and down the street there. I know on the far end of this Clay Street, there's a Nukes Sandwich Shop just been put in, so development's kind of coming in here. And I, I believe it's a good fit, we're right off the road there. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with Raising Cane's Restaurant or not. We just did one in Tyler and kind of moving this way. This restaurant brand started out in Baton Rouge, and hopefully you've heard of us, but we want, we're excited about coming to the community. I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have. I believe that we have addressed all of the things that staff had comments about. I believe that we moved our dumpster, yes, over to the other side to get away from this residence. I know that this residence here, I believe these are gonna eventually become retail or, or commercial at some point, but we did move our dumpster to get away from them, although we do keep a very enclosed, nice dumpster area. We added a fence on the west side, which was a comment, I believe, that staff had. We shielded our lights so that there's less spillage going off of our parking lot. We want to be cognizant of, of people around us. We also added a fence on the south side, according to what my civil engineer had told me that we did. And then we also increased a pipe on a driveway that's totally off-site of us, but it's up, I don't have my laser, but there's a dri, there's a driveway there over. You, you were at the right area, but, and then come this way, come to, keep on, right there, right there, that, that driveway pipe. We're showing that we would be increasing that for the neighbors beside us to kind of carry any water that's off. But I believe that we've addressed everything. I don't know if you all have any questions for me about operations, about Cane's, or about the site. So, I'm here to try to fill in for what the civil engineer was doing for me.
Okay. And it, it looks like y'all are going, going to be improving Clay Street on the north side and the alley on the south side?
Yes, sir.
With access to Airline Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's funny, you should, you know, the, the lighting issue always comes up, and I, I was, I did appreciate you sending your, your lighting plan with the, with the foot candles, foot candle calculations, and it, I spoke with an electrical engineer today that does that, and, you know, given the sensi, sensitivity of the area out there, other than shutting the project down, I think that we've done what we can do to, to make it as palatable as possible. Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Montgomery?
Is this gonna be concrete paving around for parking?
Yes, sir, I believe we'd be doing, pretty much in Texas, we always do concretes. I believe that's what we were recalling on our plans, is concrete.
And then I see landscaping plan and where it, it looks like, you know, I think that, I think that we, you know, again, outside of not doing the project with the buffering and the, and the shielding, the lighting, and you've proved that by the foot candle calculations and all that out there. I've, I think we've done what we can do.
Appreciate it. We, we put a lot of pride in our landscape, actually, because a lot of our customers are drive-through, and we want them to experience a, a nice landscape that they're driving through. We really enhance it around the order board there and all around our building, because many of our customers are picking up food to go home or, or that kind of thing. So, we don't cut any, we don't spare anything on our landscape or our building. We don't do lick and stick brick or anything like that. If it's brick, it's brick, and so.
Any commissioners have any questions?
The street goes through the project and then they're gonna park on the north side of the street?
Yes, this is.
Is Clay Street gonna remain a city street?
No, this portion in.
If you remember, on the other end of Clay Street, where the development has started, Clay Street has been abandoned, and then that's been turned into just a, a perimeter drive aisle. This situation's a little different because it still needs to have through access to all the residences. Our hope is that at some point in the future is this development kind of works towards the center, and that will become an outer feeder road. And, let me see if I can go to the aerial. There will be, at some point, driveways from Clay Street and all of this development out to the loop. There'll, there'll be two of them along here. So that will be, Clay Street will become that kind of outer feeder road. In the interim, though, they are proposing to abandon the public maintenance and ownership portion of that, and then rebuilding it as a private section. With it being a private street, it would allow for that kind of head-in parking off of the street, and it's, it's unique because it's, it's a transitional situation. But in order to kind of allow that, that kind of domino, if you will, to start to fall and, and redevelop this area, you know, it's, we're gonna have some, some things that we have to do a little differently until it completely develops. A little, little more unique than just standalone new development. But yes, the idea is that that would be abandoned as a public street, rebuilt as a wider private street section. I think they're planning on building it at 31 feet, where I believe now it's around 20 feet, and then transitioning down to a 25-foot here, and then transitioning into the existing paving. And then this, the same with the alley. That alleyway has signage on it that says it's private. I think the city's done maintenance on it in the past. Not real sure if it's a public alley, but we're gonna abandon any interest that we do have in it, and they are proposing to rebuild that, make it, make it wider. I think 25 feet, it's currently less than 25 feet, so it'll be an improvement. As the applicant stated, they will be putting a screening fence on the south side of the alley, because I believe it's the, currently it's the same property owner, so there is some continuity there with this, with this property. I believe it's a rental property, but they, just because it's rental doesn't mean that we're not gonna protect them here with a fence. We are.
Rental property to the west also.
Yes, it is. And, and if you remember back in 2012, and I'll go ahead and go to the zoning map so you can kind of get an idea, we rezoned this area for planned development, basically saying, "Yeah, we agree that general retail is appropriate here, but it should be as a planned development so that we have more opportunities to ensure that it's proper development with site plan approval." And then the, the adjacent properties there to the west came back and did the same thing. So, I think the idea that everybody, this, this'll, this'll all go to retail development, but there's still a single family that's gonna be there that we'll, we'll be protecting, as we talked about with our initial comments with the lighting plan and trying to make sure they did shift some of their lighting from its original location to mitigate. It's very difficult not to get any impact on an adjacent property, but they've done everything they can with shielding and location so that it's not a direct impact with the screening and the buffering. Went too far. Let me get back to that site plan, yeah. Lots of landscaping along this buffer area with the fence. They've got the, the buffer setback. They originally had a dumpster over here, and we said, "That's just too close to the residential," and so they did relocate that over here. So they have made a, every attempt to minimize the impact of the transition of this development, and staff does recommend approval and, and feel that they've done everything that they can with the landscaping, buffering, and everything to, to satisfy that.
From a previous meeting. But which way your water's running off? Because we had concerns previously of some drainage problem over that way?
I understand that the civil engineer had, was draining some, a portion of it. I saw on the draining plan, grading, grading and drainage plans there that it was split. A portion of it's going out Clay Street and into that culvert there that we're rebuilding and, and upsizing, and then another portion of it is going off at the bottom way, going this direction, though, catching the curbs. The curbs is, there are six-inch curbs in the alleyway that's catching the flow and going off. And I know he shows drainage calculations on there, and I'm not sure what your calculations are requiring. This is more of a, the civil engineer would be able to help me out. I don't know if he did 100-year flood or whatever he figured for that, but.
And, and this area right here between these two homes is a flood area?
100-year flood plain?
Right.
It's an unimproved creek, as you can see the culvert. So everything's draining, even from the west is draining back down this direction. It flows kind of down to this point, this is the low point. At this point right here in the alleyway, there are two very large concrete culverts that go underneath the alleyway, and then from there south, there's an improved concrete-lined drainage area. So they are trying, you know, the drainage that they're creating, they are, you know, as you mentioned, upsizing this culvert so that they don't create a flooding issue here. And through our drainage standards, you know, they'll review that and, and make sure that there's no impact on adjacent properties.
Any, any other questions for staff?
Same ownership to the south of there, even though it's a rental property?
I believe so, I believe it's the same developer that, and I believe there's two lots to the south, but I believe just one home.
Yeah, but because I was understanding that the property line went to the center of the alley, but if it's the same property, it doesn't make any difference, but it goes south side.
Correct, and through the development process, they're, they will have to go through plating and, and abandonment and all in those property lines, once the alley is abandoned, can be shifted to accommodate that.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? Having none. The public hearing is now open for application PD-14-03. Who present wishes to speak in additional support?
I'm gonna make this real brief. I'm actually a partner on this property with some other guys, and we do have the property to the south, which is one large brick rent house. And the plans for that are kind of ambiguous at this point, trying to get these guys over the hump. And I will say, they make a very nice restaurant. We drove to Shreveport, looked at a restaurant, and they do an exceptional job with their landscaping. Also, the, Michael, can you go back to the?
These properties right here, go back there.
Mr. Zorn, you'll need, you'll need to get, Mr. Zorn, could you get the microphone, please, so we can hear you?
Right. This flood plan that he was talking about, trick to this? All right.
It's happened last time, remember? Never turned on.
Okay, the, the flood plan he was talking about comes right between the divisional lines of these lots. I have these two, I have all this right here currently owned, and I have all this up here owned. These two guys are working with me to figure out a way to mitigate that flood plain and put a tile, much similar to the way Walmart did the 4th Street, under tile, under the loop on south. So, the development of, of the Raising Cane's potentially could lead to the development moving toward the center. And if you remember the, the Golden Corral, I mean, the, Golden Corral was here last November, I believe, and, and we had some issues with drainage, what have you. So I put the Nukes in first, now I'm putting the Golden Corral. Very pleased to see the Raising Cane's coming as we work toward the center of this complete Clay Street development. So, I've been down here 25 years working on it, so I'm hoping this gets my vote of approval, hope you guys approve it. Thank you.
Well, and I commend you guys for, you know, that was an area that, that was trending that way to begin with, and, and, you know, by these national franchises, you know, coming in here with, with, you know, building new buildings and, and, you know, putting people to work. You know, the taxes off, off of, you know, your business, I'm sure is a whole lot more there collecting off the rent house. And so, at the end of the day, it might be a little painful, but I think we're moving in a direction that, that we need to be moving and in a direction that is consistent with the future land use map, which kind of ties in with our initial presentation this evening, and that, that's how important it is to get involved with the future planning of your community. I mean, you're, you're looking at it right now, because, you know, if, if, if that was still residential, I don't, I don't think we would be where we are today right there, so. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
John King, 1217 Lover's Lane, Longview.
Okay.
I represent the owners of this property. We've worked tremendous hours on getting this put together, not only for Raising Cane's, but for the property behind it in the future, and dealing with the fact that Longview is running out of good retail space, and we have a list of retailers, be it national, regional, that want to come here, but they don't want to make a move that's gonna put them in a secondary location or a location that is a little bit ahead of its time. You're starting to see this inflow, this infill here, and I think that this is gonna be a great project to help kick this off. Mr. Zorn's worked hard as well, so I just wanted to view my support on it as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other comments? The public hearing for application PD-14-03 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Will we approve application PD-14-03? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, staff update?
Just want to remind everybody, as stated, about the comprehensive plan. Go to the website, longviewtexas.gov/plan. Also, remember the community meeting that we're gonna be having in February. Y'all, please come and attend those meetings and be a part of the process.
Okay. Commissioner comment? Having none. Citizen comments? Also having none. This meeting's adjourned.